Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the municipal council regular work, uh, regular meeting of Wednesday, July 24th, 2019. Everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
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 Roll call, please.
Councilmember Coyle.
Here.
Councilmember Deal.
Here.
Councilmember Gomez.
Here.
Councilmember Joshi.
Present.
Councilmember Lombardi.
Here.
Councilmember Patel.
Here.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Here.
Adequate notice, please.
Adequate notice of this meeting is required by the Open Public Meeting Act of 1975, has been provided by now. You were notified into the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on December 1st, 2018, and posted in Lobby Municipal Complex on that same date.
We have the approval of the minutes to have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Council President remarks. Just want to remind everyone that the public hearing on the budget from the administration is scheduled for Monday, July 29th. That is this coming Monday, July 29th, here in council chambers at 6:00 P.M. Special election, uh, as previously mentioned, is on, just want to remind everybody that is on Tuesday, September 10th, and that's going to be on the water and sewer ordinance. So just reminding everybody, we have a special election on September 10th on the sewer and water, uh, ordinance. Also want to let everybody know that the sewer bills are now posted online. They should be going out shortly and will be due on August 15th. Thank you. Moving to unfinished business. We have ordinance 2045-20-2019. Clerk, please read by title.
This ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
I'm going to open it up to the public.
Motion to close the public portion.
Second.
This is on the ordinance, public comments on the ordinance. Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Coyle.
Yes.
Councilmember Deal.
Yes.
Councilmember Joshi.
Yes.
Councilmember Lombardi.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Yes.
Council President Gomez.
Yes. Ordinance 2046-2019. Clerk, please read by title.
This ordinance adopting the Woodbridge Avenue redevelopment plan for the property identified on the township tax map as Block 390.A, Lot 1.A4, also known as 844 King George's Post Road in the area of Woodbridge Avenue Route 440, connection ramp to the north, Kings George Road to the south, the Edison Hotel to the west, New Street to the east pursuant to local redevelopment law.
Want to open it up to the public?
Motion to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt?
Second.
Okay, any council comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Coyle.
Yes.
Councilmember Deal.
Yes.
Councilmember Joshi.
Yes.
Councilmember Lombardi.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Yes.
Council President Gomez.
Yes. Okay, moving on to the public comments on the resolutions.
Motion to close the public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anything to be pulled on the proposed resolutions? I'll start from my right, Councilman Coyle.
Uh, Council President, I'd like to pass and go last, please.
Councilman Deal.
None, sir.
Councilman Patel.
None, sir.
Councilman Joshi.
Yes. I would like to pull Resolution 363 and 368 for, uh, 363 and 367 for a separate vote, and I'll need to abstain for Resolution 368. Or recuse myself.
Where's, so we got 363, what was he on there?
367, 368. Councilman Lombardi.
None, sir.
Councilman Sandelsky.
None, sir.
Councilman Coyle.
Uh, Council President, 366, please.
So we will be pulling 363, 366, 367, 368. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with excluding 63, 66, 67, 68?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Coyle.
Yes.
Councilmember Deal.
Yes.
Councilmember Joshi.
No.
Councilmember Lombardi.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Yes.
Council President Gomez.
Yes. 363, Councilman Joshi.
No, I just think this is a great program, uh, I, I think this is a great resolution, and I'm very happy to support it. That's all.
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to support it.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Coyle.
Yes.
Councilmember Deal.
Yes.
Councilmember Joshi.
Yes.
Councilmember Lombardi.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Yes.
Council President Gomez.
Yes. 366, Councilman Coyle.
Uh, Council President, I ask if we can just table this for 30 days. 1015 Amboy Avenue is the Heritage of Claire Barton. It's in the section, um, on Amboy Avenue and Claire Barton section. And I just want to do some further research on this particular resolution, and it's also going to be a combined sale on this property, and I just want to make sure everything is clarified properly.
I'm just a little bit confused on the delay, Councilman Coyle.
Uh, Council President, just a request to table it for 30 days. There is a contested sale in the community, um, a new buyer is coming in to purchase this property, and, uh, there's been a lot of discourse of the, of the particular buyer, and, um, this is the senior, uh, center, which is assisted living facility, and I just wanted to do some clarifications of this resolution and the process of the sale and if there are any conflicts. I'm just asking for 30 days, Council President.
Any other council comments on this resolution?
Council President, uh, I think, you know, on Monday's session, you know, we were told that this is more of an extension of the, uh, the current benefits of the tax break. Other than that, everything remains intact. Again, I may be wrong here, but, that's what I heard. So unless, you know, our attorney can clarify what this resolution about.
Leslie.
Right. It, it is to extend, um, the financial agreement, and this is one of the properties that, uh, is being used for crediting purposes for your housing plan, so it's important that the restrictions on the property remain and it remains as a property towards your affordable housing plan.
Okay.
So our understanding, it's really just extending.
Yes.
The timeframe for the pilot.
When does this expire?
Uh, let's see if it's specific. I believe because the, the refinancing that was done requires for the HMFA to have the 30 years continue as a result of the refinancing. I don't have in front of me the specific date.
But it's included in the plan right now, right? The affordable housing plan?
Yes, it's a critical component of your plan.
So the extension, did, did we figure out what the extension is for?
It says for 30 years to continue the controls. I do have their letter, attorney's letter. Excuse me, can you bring your microphone over, sir? No, I had mentioned, we did receive a letter from the attorney for the property, and I was just trying to see where it is, so I can give you that timeframe.
And this is part of our existing COA commitment?
It's part of your, it's part of your existing housing plan, yes.
Okay.
The sale that the councilman is referring to, I am not aware of, and the concerns, oh, This is to allow a new 30-year term, uh, in accordance with the NJH MFA financing that requires that the pilot be in place for the entire entirety of the 30-year financing term. So to the question of when it is set to expire, I don't have it, it's not in the letter, but I can get that information.
And Councilman Coyle, explain to us a little bit more on what the potential new buyer might come into play with, with this?
I mean, the, the controversy in the, thank you, Council President, the controversy in the community is that the current buyer has, uh, several complaints of the condition of their pre-existing, uh, medical facilities, um, and when I saw the word "transfer," I, I felt it was part of the sale, and, um, the community is in outrage of the sale of the Heritage of Claire Barton. It's owned right now and been maintained by the same owner for some time, so, um, it was, it was questionable for me to vote on this, and it's in, and it's in our community, and, uh, several people brought it to my attention. So as soon as they were "transfer," I felt it was part of the real estate transfer, and I wanted to make sure, had ample time to do the research to make sure everything was clarified.
But this is only an extension of the, this is for the purpose of them refinancing?
Right, and, uh, there will be new ownership to 1015 Amboy A.L.F. Realty LLC.
Okay.
The project is being conveyed to that entity, and that entity is the one that went for refinancing, and as part of the refinancing, uh, there's a requirement that the pilot remain in place for the 30 years of the refinancing.
Okay.
And that's what they're asking, that the time period for the financing will expire beyond the 30 years that's currently on it, so they're asking for the extension, which is permitted by law.
How much time do we have, if, if any, to make this happen? My biggest concern is that it doesn't have a negative impact on our current COA commitment on the housing plan.
The impact it may have is on the timing of the financing. I, I don't know what their schedule is to have everything in place in order to secure the financing from the H, HMFA.
Okay.
So there may be a time sensitivity in that regard.
So they could potentially lose their financing, right? If this doesn't go?
Potentially it could.
Yeah.
I, I don't know the timing of it.
Anybody else? Okay, um, have a motion?
Motion to accept.
Have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Coyle.
No.
Councilmember Deal.
Yes.
Councilmember Joshi.
Yes.
Councilmember Lombardi.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Yes.
Council President Gomez.
Yes. Okay, 367.
Yes. This is a terrific shared services agreement, just wanted to comment on it. Just so everyone knows, there's, this would have costed, this is government working at its best. This would have costed both Matutchen as well as Edison well over $3 million if we tried to do it separately. However, because this is a shared services agreement, uh, we're splitting the cost, and this is a great resolution. This is, I hope everyone supports it. Thank both mayors for coming up with this, and I would like to see more shared services agreement like this.
Thank you, sir. You have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Coyle.
Yes.
Councilmember Deal.
Yes.
Councilmember Joshi.
Yes.
Councilmember Lombardi.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Yes.
Council President Gomez.
Yes. Council President, I'd also just like to note, I know we just voted on this, but a gentleman who was getting flooded out in Matutchen came to the previous meeting and asked that we would support this resolution on the, on the new, uh, substation there, the new pumping station, so it is a very good thing, like Councilman Joshi had said. Thank you, sir. Resolution, Resolution 368.
Motion to accept. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Coyle.
Yes.
Councilmember Deal.
Yes.
Councilmember Joshi.
I'm recusing myself.
Councilmember Lombardi.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandelsky.
Yes.
Council President Gomez.
Yes. Okay, we're moving on to oral petitions and remarks. We do not have a list.
Good evening. Richard Brecher, 868 Grove Avenue, Edison, um, to the new councilmen. When I say "new," you could have been here four, five, six years. I'd like to just educate the council on an issue on Grove Avenue. About 2001, Grove Avenue started to flood. At that time, I came to council meetings for probably four or five years, so anybody that's been here that long would have seen me here, and I would have explained that Grove Avenue never flooded in the past. During that time, we did an investigation, and Mr. Rusamano went out with myself and, and other DPW workers, and we found that the drainage that goes through the developments, goes all the way down to Inman, had blockages, and they had to apply to the DEP and get the permits, and they cleaned them out. Since that day, Grove Avenue never flooded at all, and we had torrential rainstorms, we had hurricanes, we had all, never flooded except when we changed the drain heads with the new paving on Grove Avenue. And I came and I spoke about it, because I said, now that the bottles and cans and garbage can't go down into the stream, the street floods, and I was told that we were going to come and we were going to take care of it, and we're going to maintain the roads and clean them. And, and that sounded like, like a feasible plan, I guess. And then I looked around the town, and on Grove Avenue, in fact, only a couple hundred feet away, was a different type of drain head, the old drain head. So when the contractors came in, some of them they changed, some of them they didn't, they just happened to change the ones in the area that really affects it the most. So like if you swapped the two out, you'd probably stop the flooding, because the other night, I guess at about 10 o'clock, Grove Avenue was closed, as we all know, but it wasn't like flooding where we just say, hey, the whole town flooded, and that was the issue. That's not the issue. It does not flood if it's maintained, and we showed that by us cleaning up the, you know, the streams, or whatever you want to call them. They could use to be cleaned out now after JP Stevens, because if you look at them, the, the growth in them is actually pretty bad, like out to Dover. From that point forward, it actually looks fine, but I'd like to see if we can get the DPW to fix this so that the $2,000 I just spent on mulch, which was one month ago, that now is on all the homes on Grove Avenue, I don't have to spend another $2,000 to put mulch down again. So it's just a maintenance thing, so if we can get somebody to look at it and take care of it before it rains again.
Sure, Maureen, uh, you got it?
Second question, real quick. We have these green clothing bins throughout the town, and I know that on the Board of Education, we're looking to have them removed, because they were put there, I, I shouldn't say illegally, but the Board of Education cannot give a contract for more than a year. The Board of Education has to approve any contracts that come through it, and some contract was signed for 10 years by the ex-supervisor. So the contract really isn't void, so we're going to have them removed within the next couple of weeks. But I also noticed that the town had an ordinance. I think that the clothing bins have to be like a mile apart, and I'm wondering how, anybody who's familiar with North Edison, there's two at the North Edison Library, there's two at Polanski Park, which used to be Oak Grove, which is across from JP Stevens, there's one at JP Stevens, you have one at James Madison, so within like a one-mile circle, I, I think I counted eight. Is there a way that we could get a towing company to kind of pick them up and maybe recycle the recycling bins for scrap metal or something, if they won't remove them?
Yeah, let's look at the ordinance, because they would, it got to be a little bit more specific, uh, and if you're saying that they were on school property also, that, yeah, so we'll take a look at the ordinance and see what needs to be done.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. We're off the list. Oral petitions and remarks.
Uh, good evening. Anthony DeAmmer, 15 Rodax Circle. First off, uh, I'm looking forward to Monday's budget presentation. That's this Monday, correct?
That's correct.
I have one recommendation, uh, well, two, actually. I know I kind of beat up on this before, I did it at the Board of Ed, it's the scheduling. To me, this budget presentation is probably, it's bigger than the State of the Township address. I think it's, it's that big. It's, you know, it's, it's the budget, and it's that, and I feel like we don't do a good enough job promoting when it, when it is, time, location, even I, somebody who goes to all these meetings, I completely, I got it wrong, I thought it was today, actually. Plus, there's a Board of Ed meeting on, on Monday. There's a lot of big issues going on at the Board of Ed, so I think it's, it's hard for people to, again, be two places at one time, so I know that it was already pre-scheduled. I'm not here to hammer, you know, you guys on that, but going forward, we really, really got to stress not scheduling them on the same day, because, uh, people do care what's going on over there, and, uh, I wanted to say that. Also, I don't know who to contact about this, or if it's you guys, but on, from Heath Coath Ave, on Whitman and where Heath Coath, uh, Heath Coated is, all the way to the dog park. Now, that stretch is probably about 100 yards, maybe 150 yards, it's not that long, go over the Conrail railroad tracks, but it's a very dangerous trek if you're somebody that wants to, you know, a young mother pushing a stroller with a dog that wants to go use the dog park. I can tell you, I live in that development back there, so I know for years, people have always said, you know, it's just, it's really dangerous, there's no walk path, you really are on the, you're taking your life into your hand, especially if somebody's driving around that bend coming from Matutchen, if they're on the phone and they don't see you, it's, it's, you know, it's, uh, something bad could happen. So I don't, we, a bike lane or a walk lane or something, there's enough room there. How could we go about really building something, just the, maybe, like I said, maybe it's 100 yards, 150, I don't know. Who do we go about?
We can ask engineering to look into it.
Yeah.
See what options we have, and, and I think, yeah, we're certainly open to that.
It takes away from the, you know, it, people in my neighborhood actually don't even use it as much now, because they would rather almost go into their car, and for them, it's, it's a couple blocks away, and it's just, it's a hassle to put a dog and kids and stuff like that in the car. Also, could we look into getting a bathroom in, in the dog park as well? Is that possible, like a PortaJohn or something? There's nothing there, so, um...
Uh, Maureen, if we can, I guess speak with all the, yep.
Okay. That'd be terrific, thank you. That's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Julian Zama, 17 Styles Road. I'd like to reiterate what, uh, the previous speaker just said. I run through there practically every morning, and it's worse during the winter, because when you have snow and ice on the shoulder, you're kind of forced to run where the traffic is, and, uh, it gets pretty nasty, because a lot of times, the drivers have sun glare, and they don't even see you. And on that section, the rule of thumb is when you're running or walking, you go against traffic, but because of the curve that, uh, you have to stay on the right, because the thing is to be seen. So, uh, that's the thing. As far as the restroom goes, or PortaJohn, that would really be appreciated. Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you, sir.
Well, Schneer, Edison. What are we going to talk about? I know I'm going to be, have battle with this. It's been quite a few years that the city hall was down by the non-named street block off, or I should say, right behind the white church. The city hall, the first city hall was there. Second thing, Department of Public Works was there behind the white church, too. The church gave permission to park and build a DBW there. I think in, from, an interest with the church, and give them a little thanks for using that property, is to pave the road behind there at least once. If an ambulance has to go through there, it's going to be a problem. That is one road that's worse than any other road around, but I think, I know Edison doesn't own it, the church does, but in appreciation, I think Edison should do it at least once, pave it. That's what I got to say. Thank you.
Sir.
Thank you, Maria Orchid, 83 Jefferson. The first thing I wanted to mention is that there's still a recycling program through New Jersey Clean Energy Recycling Program. They take refrigerators that are in good work in order, and you get $50 for them, they recycle them. What I didn't know was they also take your washing machine and your dryer, your air conditioners and your humidifiers. So if you look on their website, they'll be happy to come and pick it up, and you could get some money in, uh, rebate, uh, I think NJBPU.com for more information on that. Thank you for everybody who came to the Neighborhood Block Watch. It was a pretty good crowd. The first presenter was Patrolman Jackson, and the second one was the New Jersey BPU Clean Energy. On Saturday, I don't know, I'm sorry, I was a little late for the meeting, Saturday at Matutchen Sports Complex from 2:00 to 5:00 is going to be the fundraiser. I know the gentleman was here previously, so I wanted to say it again if he didn't say it. August 6th is the National Night Out. The movie's going to be Spider-Man. I'm a little disappointed that we don't have a farmer's market. I have a lot of people asking, I even tried to go to Lot, which is going to be opening on July 6th, and asking them if they could come with some fruits and vegetables for the local people. Unfortunately, we can't find a farmer to come to the farmer's market, so we don't have a farmer's market. So if anybody knows of any farmer, I'd be willing to listen, and, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else?
Crystal, 14 Fox Road. I mentioned to a few of the councilmen, uh, I'm going to have to talk straight through you, the chairman. I want to apologize to Councilman Deal for, for the other day. I did not mean to speak out of turn. I thought you were asking me a question, and, uh, the microphones sometimes are so bad, I, you know, I thought you asked me why I hate France, and that's why I came up. I didn't come up just to speak out of turn, so I apologize for that. I would like before and after we say the Pledge of Allegiance, also after we say the Pledge of Allegiance, we say a Hail Mary, and we close it out with an Our Father. I'd appreciate that. I want to protect our monuments, veterans memorials, September 11 memorial, and never banned the, uh, the cross of Jesus Christ on the dollar bill that says "In God We Trust." If you burn the dollar bill, the Secret Service will, it's a felony. So if any Antifa people come here trying to destroy our monuments, police has to do something about that right away. They can't just come here with their helmets and start attacking our residents. Did you guys, when you become councilmen, take an oath to uphold the Constitution?
Uh, New Jersey Constitution, yes.
USA Constitution?
Do you, New Jersey Constitution.
Oh, not, and...
It's both.
Both, okay, okay.
Correction, thank you.
So, um, I just would like to let you know, my sign, that was my First Amendment right to free speech, so... to free speech, so that alone violated the Constitution, just to let you know. About these robo-calls, I'm having my grandma coming over. She has Alzheimer's. Sometimes I get a robo-call coming to my house, and I'll hang up, the first second I'll hang up, I'll pick up the phone 15 later, 15 minutes later, and the machine's still talking. There could be a medical emergency going on. I have someone with diabetes at my home, I'm going to have my grandma with Alzheimer's at my home, and that's a safety issue right there. We got to somehow find a way to stop these robo-calls. It's a big-time safety issue. I still got more minutes?
Yes, sir.
When the Department of Public Works is not too busy calling people Nazis, they're not out there cleaning out the debris. The flooding in the street was terrible. She knows. I went from the Board of Education yesterday to come here. Some of the flooding was like this on the side streets, four feet. One person, the creek flooded in back of his home. The flooding came into his house, and while he was actually pumping the water from his home, he got injured. So now people are getting injured because the DPW is too busy calling people Nazis rather than doing their job. I saw Shannon Peng yesterday at Board Education. I remember at the committee of the whole, she said she had no idea what a blast email was. Somebody had asked her, was it one, was it two, was it three? She didn't recall. I have a video of her. Become, all of a sudden, she became a blast email specialist. And I'm going to put those two videos together. I just got the one so far to prove she perjured herself. Sam Joshi, you had mentioned me on a Facebook post. You said, "Edison is among the most diverse communities in America," Sam Joshi said. That's the councilman. Oh, I'm speaking through you right now. I'm speaking through you. "If we can't tackle racism here, we can't expect it to be addressed elsewhere. What happened right in front of police and elected officials shows racism is still prevalent, and it's unacceptable." Thank God you're not a member of the media. Because number one, that's fake news. You also showed a picture of me underneath that. Number two, it wasn't in front of police. If it was in front of police, why was I sitting on the bench and police had to be called? Lie number two. Just so you know, there is no racism in Edison. There never was. We've always been accepted, everybody. The only racism came from the racial flyers and those who attacked the Tingle family and those who made flyers attacking the Han family, and we never got apologies for that. I didn't see anyone admitting or apologizing to that. And we all know who did it. It's just, we got to wait for the committee to finish, for them to completely admit. I still got time, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Our opioid epidemic is rising, our suicides rates are skyrocketing. There's no place, facility in Edison that we can help our people recover so they can become a functioning member of society again. I would like, you know, for us to create a facility. You can let her know over there to look into it.
We'll work with the Health Department to look into it, certainly.
Great job. And I want to just say, I was investigating racism as the media, and I want to apologize to anybody who thought it was a personal attack on a certain minority group or anything like that. It wasn't in that case at all. That's my time, Beepin?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to go sit down.
Thank you very much.
Oh, and God bless America. Don't forget, God bless America, and God bless President Trump.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Motion to close.
Pass third.
Amsterdam, it's 162 B Fay Street. When I was here Monday night and I left, we had that huge rain going on. When I got to the end of the driveway and wanted to get out onto 27, I really thought that I was going to not make it in the flood at the end of the street. I don't know what's the matter with the drains. We have a lot of drains in town that don't drain. Now, I know we've got problems with our storm. I hope that the Public Works folks made a big list of all the places that were flooded because it was on Channel 12. They said, oh, Edison is flooded out, you know, I mean, when I got home. And I was a little nervous about getting home, I have to tell you, because I couldn't go down 27 because they had it blocked off, so I had to go around through the side streets. I really hope that they have made a good list of all of the places that they need to look at doing something, at least about something like this when it rains and we get these major flooding issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think that the State Office of Emergency Management said that Edison was, I forget how they phrased it, but we were to the extreme of the amount of rain that we got in the time period, you know, throughout what the storm was passing. So certainly something that we don't hope to get, but to your point, we'll be proactive and take the opportunity to get in front of it.
Well, I'm afraid you're going to get it again.
I hope not. That was bad.
You've got to be prepared, give, you know, hope. I mean, you've got to be prepared.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. Anybody else? Have a motion to close?
I'm moved.
Second.
In favor?
I have a quick question. Is there going to be a three-minute portion as well?
We just closed the public portion, sir.
Oh, no rebuttals?
No, the public portion is now closed. Sorry. I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Meeting stands adjourned.